Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 10th. Audra, can you have the record show that our city attorneys, city planners, city engineer, along with all council members are present? Tonight, we are missing our city administrator, but we have our assistant city administrator this evening. And also for anyone on Zoom, we're sorry for the delay. We had a technical issue. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is going to bear open forum. This is the portion where residents can come to the podium, state their name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
It's me. Hey, everybody. Jeannie Hall, County Commissioner. First of all, it's been a while, sorry. But excited to hear that you guys got that trail grant. I'm sure Adam shared with you the $160,000 to finish off the trail from Boondocks and that part of Parish Avenue. And that's going to be the start of then maybe, I'm not sure when, but they're in discussion as to when they're going to resurface Parish and then do those middle turn lanes, so there's no passing on the right. So very excited about that. And then, I'm not sure if Adam shared with you, I'm sure, but the county has postponed doing the roundabout on 39 and 19 for two years. And that is because the the bridge in Monticello is going to be down to one lane. And so that's going to impact people crossing the river. And we feel like they're going to be using this path to get into Wright County. And then next year, they'll have 94 all dug up, and that is the detour. So that's why they decided to hold it for two years. But Adam was concerned about, you know, having the county forget about it. And I said, no, I will not let the county forget about it. You will get your roundabout after that. The next thing, kind of hard news to say. The sheriff last week came and has decided that he wants to raise the hourly rate by $5 an hour. But that's going to be for this, for next year and the following year. So $5 this year and $5 the next year. Wasn't too excited about it because you guys did get a significant bump last year. I think it was 21%. Well, I did express my concern that, you know, it's, we're just here. We, but um, he did say he's going to hold steady. And for that reason, the commissioners were in favor of it just because we know that inflationary costs and gas. So they'll hold steady. They won't come back and say, oh, gas is more money, so we're going to assess more. So you have that now, which will make it a little easier for Adam to budget. So it's $5, which is five, kind of 5% this year, and then five next year. 80% of his budget is employees. So that's kind of where we were, we're going with the 5% because it's basically cola. So just wanted to give you that news. And then the last thing is, I know Jessica knows, I know some of you know, but since December, I've been dealing with homeowners association out in townhouses in in Atsigo, villages, I think it's called. Is that right?
It's south on Page Avenue. It's the Parish Avenue development. The townhouse is down there.
Okay. Anyways, these, these poor people were assessed a roof that they, it was, it was very mysterious why they needed the new roof because they made the decision to get a new roof prior to the hailstorm that they're counting as why they needed a roof. So they, the homeowners association through, they have a new management company, first of all. So it's a new management company and it's called Gas and Management Company. They had, they had a, got the homeowners association talking about a new roof the end of June. And then it was July 3rd that they made the decision to go ahead and put in a new roof. They then assessed, told every, after they did the roof, they told everybody they owed $18,600. Because in the meantime, they not only got a new roof, they have a new insurance broker. We found out that the roofing company and the insurance broker are bought and owned by the Gas and Management Company. So these people, even though they've been paying for insurance for their, their, the outside, they were, and they were told, like many home, like townhomes, you guys have to insure the inside. So they were told that. And then, then were assessed and said that it's $20,000 per roof. Many, many of them didn't have the insurance to pay for that. So $18,600 was assessed to all of them. Their, the homeowners association chipped in the 2,000 or their insurance, or it was paid for. Some people had insurance to cover it. Some people had, their insurance said they're only going to pay for $10,000 of it because it shouldn't have costed more than $10,000. And then, in the meantime, we found out that they're having, they're, they will not, and Jessica went to the meeting, found out they weren't giving out their phone numbers. Homeowners Association will, that board refuses to give out their phone numbers. So they have to call Gassen. And when they call Gassen, and they will, they, they will refer them. If, like even there's a little lady, I talked to her son today. And if she would call, she would get a lawyer fee. So she's a cute, a lot of these people have accused up to $1,000 in lawyer fees. Roxanne, she's the gal that has been taking the reins, thankfully, and has put together a very good report. And I will send it to, I think I have yours, Jessica, and she can send it to you. The report is very good. It tells all the things, all the, all the things that, that Gassen has done wrong. The homeowners, the board is having meetings without telling the group, the people that they have to leave because they're having private meetings. They didn't put any bids out for that roof. They didn't allow the homeowners to know ahead of time, and they couldn't vote. They're supposed to have a two-thirds vote on that. That was, that didn't happen. But the scary thing now is now they're placing liens. So the liens are now, and so I went, Tony Tran, who I originally talked to, called me. And he's, now he's worried because he can't. And, oh, and then when they said that they would, they would pay for, they would help, you know, if somebody had struggled paying, they would float them the money, but at a 24% interest rate. So they're, they're just, it's not good. So it, it, a lot of fixed incomes in this association. We did see a house up for sale. Roxanne gave me the address, and that house has a $20,000 lien. So I'm sure they had the $18,600. They probably have late fees. They probably have lawyer fees. There is, our county attorney was very disturbed by the whole thing. He read Roxanne's report. It's very good. And, and he has sent it on to the Attorney General. And I have talked to Senator Hoffman, who represents Atsigo, and got his office to kind of push it now a little faster because of the liens. We're afraid of foreclosure now. And I'm sure Gassen would love to buy them. I'm just kind of going by the practices we're seeing in this, this last six months. It's just ridiculous. So I wanted you to know that that's where that's at. We're, you know, just kind of figuring out all of our options. We're putting out a letter to all the, all the homeowners minus the board members to see who else has any kind of lawyer expenses. Because this Roxanne has $900 lawyer expenses because she emailed a question like, can you give me the, the bids you got for the roof? And it was sent to their legal and then came back with a $300 bill with no answers. And then they will not give her an itemized bill as to what the legal fees are for. So she's got 900. And then this, this man today, he had just copied the lawyer to say that his mother will not, his mother, he is now the hot, the power of attorney, and he got a $130 bill just because, and it said on his bill for information about the power of attorney. So it's a really crazy and really sad for those residents. There's 96 people in this unit. And we don't know where it's going to go from here, but we might need your help. If, if it does, you know, if the county or the Attorney General needs our help, I might have you, or if we decide to go to the media, I don't know. We'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted. I hope nobody is, is rendered homeless. That is the scary thing. Because, you know, their credit is ruined right now. A lot of these people can't pay both their mortgage and this, you know, $18,600 or $10,000. And so that's, I think we're going to keep seeing these, these foreclosures or these liens and then possibly foreclosures. So wanted to bring you up to speed on that, working diligently. I hope we can save those, save that. I, I do, I do think that they're going to, you know, have to, I think their, their thought now is to get a new homeowners association board elected so that they can stop some of these things. Because this board really doesn't really care if these people get assessed lawyer fees because it was brought up in the January homeowners association meeting that I went to. And they didn't, they, we told them then that they should, you know, get rid of Gassen. And I had said, if, if you keep, because they had till the end of January, they had a full room of people who wanted to get rid of Gassen. And I, and I gave them two options, one in Rogers, one in Elk River, very small, nice companies that could manage it. And but it was, I said, you guys, if you don't get rid of them, you're going to, if they own an asphalt company, you're going to get new driveways. If they own a window factory, you're going to get new windows. And that's, I think, what they're scared of. And they need a board to be able to put the brakes on that. So that's, I think, their next step, too, is to get a new board. Hopefully, it works. But kind of sad news, like. And I'm sure like Atsigo and many other cities across America, these homeowners associations have a lot of, like deceptive practices. And, you know, and, and I, we are now, too. I talked to Hoffman and Lucero and Hudson. And I said, we need to mirror legislation to go with this case specifically that's at the Attorney General's so that they can't have any conflict of interest. They shouldn't be able to use their own roofing company, their own broker company, you know. So hopefully, too, then, that we can make some changes in the state of Minnesota. But until then, just wanted to let you know that there's some liens out there. I'll keep you posted. But if you guys, I'll send that report to you, that Roxanne did. Did I send it to you?
I didn't, no. Okay, but I, if you send it to me, I can get it to these guys, and they can send it to the full council then.
Yeah, yeah, because it's very well done. You'll be really impressed with Roxanne. She did a really good job. So any other questions for me?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Jeannie, can we back up? Who is Roxanne? Is she a homeowner?
Yes, she's a homeowner. She ended up being Tony Tran's neighbor, and her insurance paid for the whole thing. She got the whole $18,600 paid for, which Attorney Lutz said, that really looks good because she did all this deep digging. She went through all the minutes prior to the roof going on. She had taken pictures of the roof before they re-roofed. She's been just digging. And, and he said in the report will reflect how much work she went into. But he said it really looks good from his perspective in the Attorney General because she does not have any skin in the game, basically. Because her insurance paid the whole $18,600. So for that reason, we're really grateful for her. She's done a lot of hard work. And I know Jessica's met, met with her, and she's just really doing great for her neighbors.
And was this just last summer, this past?
Yes, it happened. They re-roofed it in September, late September. They all got the bill right before Christmas. That was due December 31st. So you can imagine how nice their Christmas was. And so that's when I got the call. I got the call in December, like two weeks before Christmas. And, and then I called the Gassen company, and I said, how's he going to pay for this? You know, it's Christmas, and he's got a mortgage. And they said, oh, well, we'll do a payment plan. So then I told Tony, you have to call and get a payment plan. And he, and then they found out it was 24% interest.
And how many actual homes and residents are affected by this? So there was 96 total in there. How do we know how many are actually?
That's what we're trying to get now. That's what, what information we're trying to garner because it's, it's really hard. I did send Roxanne, and two of the, two of the homeowners were roofers by trade. And they want, they had asked if they could bid on this job, and they were not allowed to. And they went to go talk to Nate Allen, who is homeowners association lawyer that Attorney Lutz said would, because Attorney Lutz said, I know criminal, I don't really know, you know, realty law or homeowners association. And he suggested Nate. And Nate was very kind about, like, going through with them, you know, all, everything. And he said, they, he, he would take the case, but the retainer was $15,000. And not everybody's equally affected. Some, some of them, their insurance, you know, thankfully paid. Some only had some of it paid for, and then some had that 18-6. And so that, that's what's, you know, hard. So then that's when we decided, plus, they would have had probably, you know, settled out of court. They probably, they wouldn't have been able to talk about it, Nate said. So then that's why they expediated it, and we got it to the Attorney General. The Attorney General got it probably around the beginning of April. And so then Roxanne came about three weeks ago to the county, and we met with Brian Lutz. So that, because now with the liens, she's concerned about these people. Plus, she herself refuses to pay those lawyer bills because they won't give her an itemized, you know, bill as to what it is, and she's worried about her credit. So he gave her some ideas as what she can do to guard her credit. And then we, I did also talk to the, the depart, the Department of Commerce. And I said, is there a way that you can help? And there is none. They, he said in 2015, they, they had a case where they, they wanted the Department of Commerce to, to kind of regulate management companies because they do it for apartments. They manage apartment management companies. But for some reason, there's a glitch or who's ever reading the law said that they don't have any jurisdiction over that. So that is something, too, that we need to fix. Because I said to the guy, I said, he goes, we get calls all the time, and we can't help anybody. I said, that would be, for me, really heartbreaking that, you know, you're sitting in that position, and you can't help anybody. He says, oh, believe me, it is, it's really hard. Because there's a lot more, you know, there's a lot of cases where there's mismanagement. You know, and it comes down to, you know, if you can take advantage of a board, you know, and as Jessica saw, they were, you know, kind of a older, you know, board, and they're probably tired and didn't want to manage, you know, with enthusiasm. So I don't know. But yeah, so we've been really just trying everything. I really thought the Department of Commerce was going to be able to help us, but that was another dead end. We've just been hitting dead ends like crazy. So just really hoping that the Attorney General can move this along a little quicker so that these people's credits not affected. Because, you know, they want, if they want to move, you know, they, they're not going to be able to find anything, so.
And, and just a piece, so when Jeannie contacted me about this months ago, it, you know, I kind of did the same thing of like, well, let's call the attorney, you know, kind of directing him. But we had all done basically the same pieces. So Jeannie has really kind of taken this on her own, on the side, to try to navigate at the county level. Because there was nothing at the city level that we could do since we don't manage homeowners associations.
And that's the same thing. I have no jurisdiction. But yeah, and they did appreciate you coming to the February meeting. Because I went to the January one. I think you went to the February. And, and it was, you'll, you'll have to tell them your conversation because I think it's, I tell everybody that, you know, when they, they asked,
I, I just said, you need to provide your numbers. And they said, well, we're not giving out our numbers. Do you give out your numbers? And I gave them all my number, 612. And they said, well, that's ridiculous. We're not doing it. So it's, it's really disappointing because again, there's only 96 houses back there. So they all know who is who. Yeah, but it was just really unfortunate, so.
Yeah, and a lot of older people and a lot of single moms. And so I think that's why Roxanne took it. She's, she's a, she's a single lady, but you know, she's, she feels for the, you know, the, she's recently retired. And she said she feels sorry for the moms and the seniors that are there that earn fixed incomes. And I mean, even people that have a lot of money, 18, 18-6 is a lot of money to come up with for a roof.
And as Jeannie said, it's not equal amongst everybody. Some people have $500, some people have 1,000. So it's, yeah, so, so the number's large, but it's also, you know, I guess my way of looking at it, too, is these insurance companies got overcharged, too. So these insurance, they should be trying to go against this Gassen.
And then, yeah, and then Attorney Lutz said, too, you know, funny that mortgage companies aren't, mortgage companies aren't more involved because, you know, they actually own the property, you know, and if they got some tremendous liens on their property. So I don't know, you know, we tried to have, like, Tony and some of these people did call their mortgage companies, but, you know, they can't really do anything, so.
But.
It seems a little bit, from start to finish, it just seems like there were many, many steps missing and communication was missing. And it's unfortunate that this is happening to some of these homeowners. And I think there is power in numbers, and there is power in, in communication now would be a great time. So if, you know, like you said, I appreciate that you're trying to help them.
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep working at it. But in case someday you see it blowing up in the news, then you know.
And shame on Gassen.
I know.
Go in the minutes. Shame on them. Because that, this is really poorly done, in my opinion.
And, you know, I contacted Lucero because he was trying to push some stuff through with HOAs. And, and said, I've got a whole group that you could talk to. And he also, yeah, and he, and he's actually talked with Tony Tran and I think two other residents over there, but kind of gave them the same, yeah, answer that he didn't really have any traction or speed to get anything to move forward with it, so.
So next year, we'll be at, at the Capitol fighting.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Thank you. When I let you speak more than five minutes, it's important.
It is. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for the update and thank you for what you've been doing. Oh, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to take down a 3.15. And we can put it, I don't know, if you want to put it that.
5.2.
5.2?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Anyone else? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to approve that agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. Motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is item 4.1, Carrick's Landing Park Improvements. This is, who of you will be speaking?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We're here before you tonight because we had some revelations and that we had missed something when it came to including prevailing wages in the bidding documents and specifications for the Carrick's Landing project. And City Engineer Wagner and myself worked together with City Attorney Kendall and kind of formed a plan of action. And that plan of action unfortunately leads to, you know, having a resolution rejecting the bids and then ultimately authorizing the bidding process again for another round. So it's unfortunate and it sets us back a little bit, but it's ultimately the right thing because without prevailing wages, we're at jeopardy of losing the $350,000 per the DNR grant requirement. So it's, it's an oversight, and we're very sorry, but we're here to rectify the situation. Ron, is there anything else?
Well, I think you covered it pretty well.
All right, questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
We don't get to peek at the bids that we got? We, we knew all the bids that we got.
Yeah, we opened them, and we brought them to council for award.
Yeah, we approved this, right.
But we never signed the contracts.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that's ringing a bell now.
Yeah, they were all in there.
Yeah, okay.
So let's start that, starting over and hopefully, well, hopefully the same person who we awarded it to will bid again. If not, the others will sharpen their pencils.
Right.
We can only hope. Okay. Any more questions? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'll make motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-42, Rejecting Bids, Resending Bid Acceptance and Contract Award and to authorize a competitive bid process for the Carrick Landing Park Improvements Project.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Moving on to item 5.1, I will turn this over to Brittany, and I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, item 5.1 is to approve the claims list. We have a piece of paper in front of us, council members. Looks like we have a check that is from Jim Stock Camp. To Jim, excuse me, to Jim Stock Camp. What did I say? To Jim Stock Camp, and the amount is, excuse me, 7129. And so I will make a motion to approve check number 47891 in the amount of 7129. Is there a second?
Real quick, Mayor Portem, that's check 74891, and this is for, not his labor, but his, what he, what the cost was to fix whatever that was fixed.
The cemetery. We did the cemetery sign.
For sure.
Did I not say the term, right?
Check, you said 47, but it's 74891.
Oh, I apologize.
Mayor Portem, I would second.
First time we're up here, guys. Okay, there, I have a motion on the table, and there was a second. I'll pay you for any discussion, excuse me.
Mayor Portem.
Yes, right.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Stock Camp for his work on repairing the sign and helping preserve our history. Very much appreciated. I second that also. Nice.
He did a one, he did a wonderful job.
That's our son.
And yes, also Logan Stock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Stock.
All right, I will move on to item 5.2, which Tina had requested to move down from 3.15.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I know we discussed this in a special meeting. And something that I know I didn't ask, I don't know if anyone else did, but I'd like to at least table this to basically see what, what the mileage was. I think he either does quarterly, monthly, quarterly reports. But I would like to table this to see exactly what was, you know, what was spent quarterly or monthly, however he recorded it, to see if this is an allowable amount, too much. I, I, I don't know that we asked that, and that was my bad. So that's why I wanted to pull this and table it for discussion, to get that information, to see where it's been passed.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
If my memory serves, it was, this was the average monthly, it was not the maximum.
Correct.
So it was, it would be in line with what we would typically see on average in terms of, um. Mileage, so it's somewhat of a wash.
And when, and to Ryan's point, when we asked for information, when Sabrina gathered it, it was also taking what other cities. Had for max and minimums too, to that, right, to Ryan's point to that. All right, well. We need a motion either way, either to accept this and move forward or. For Tina's request to table it, but at this point, this was on our consent agenda for approval and we did discuss it.
Yeah, I would, Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
I would just say, I, I. Um, understand the members' concerns, but, uh. We did discuss this in the special meeting, so I don't, I wouldn't need any more information, so. With that, I would, I would move to approve the vehicle allowance for the city administrator in a monthly amount of three hundred seventy-five dollars effective January first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Brittany, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay, we are still under city, or I'm sorry, uh, administration. We have nothing left, so we will move on to item six for city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything that they would add, like to add or update the council on?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
Uh, I know in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have our EDA, our first EDA meeting in, I think, a little over four years. Um, so I've moved that all EDA meetings be audio and video recorded and that they be uploaded to our city YouTube page. I would need a second on that.
Looking to Sabrina on this one, Dan?
Mayor, that'd probably be an issue the EDA would decide as part of their meeting, since that's a separate body.
We can't direct the EDA to do that?
Well, I mean, I understand that the membership of the EDA is gonna be basically the same as the membership of the council, so I. I would suggest that you do address it when you meet as, as the EDA.
So, I would just say, my concern is that might be our only meeting and it won't be recorded. Because that has been the practice in the past, so.
Madam Mayor, is, is this? What is, I guess, the practice? Is it supposed to be recorded or and put on YouTube? How do other cities do that?
Not required to, our city is different, that we put it out on YouTube and that we offer this.
I would just say many cities do record all of their commission meetings and city council meetings and EDA meetings, so.
Madam Mayor, I think it would, I think it would be appropriate just to have a conversation with the EDA when we meet with them. Or, I guess.
It's us, we're gonna have a conversation with ourselves.
Well, but we've never had, we've never recorded that before, so.
Well.
And, and to, and to our other commission meetings either, so.
When the EDA met last, no meetings were recorded, so. That's why I thought it would just kinda be nice to get ahead of it, since it's probably gonna be our only EDA meeting, might as well be transparent.
That's all, uh, all the notes are taken and it's all public too, right?
They are public meetings, but I think it would be better if they're, I don't even be recorded.
And so, council member done up, you're asking for audio recording and then to put on YouTube?
Audio and video and to put it on YouTube, similar to the way we do our city council meetings.
Council?
I'm fine with it. I'm, I have nothing to hide.
Yeah, well, it's a public meeting anyway, but, yeah, we're good at putting everything on video.
Make sure that my makeup is extra nice that night.
It'll be nice night.
Then that would be, would that be before?
But they're.
A council meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be at five thirty, which is the other issue. I think some people can't make a five thirty meeting, so.
We all do, so.
Yeah.
Right.
If they can't, then it's being recorded.
Right, that would be my motion, yes.
And, I mean, it's an option that is put out here, um, live. Do we have, I mean, I guess we'd have to talk to staff to see how that works to, did you make another folder for this or how does this all work, so? Those are questions I don't have yet, so. If we could get that information back to us, that'd be great. Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, a motion, was there a second?
Was there a second to his motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina, is there any discussion?
Would this be?
Oh, sorry, it was just that, to give us the information back.
This just be for the information?
Yes.
That wasn't my motion.
No, no, I, I understand that I'm asking as, if that could be part of it, that we can get an update on how that will be stored.
Yep. Sure. What you're doing, sure. Accepting.
Yeah, on YouTube.
Is there any more discussion? All those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Uh, and then real quick, Madam Mayor, I think the other thing, it would be nice if we could have, um, the nineteen ninety-two resolution and the. Believe it is twenty thirteen amendment. Um, if that could be included in our packet.
I believe Adam, wow, I'm like, I was not. Adress sent us information today. Did anyone, did everyone get that?
I did not, so.
It's the one you had requested last week.
Oh, that's for the, that was for the other, the bond, yeah, I'm actually asking for the, uh, establishing resolution to be included. That was two thousand and seven, no, ninety-two is the one I'm thinking of. Left you for this building, no, so in ninety-two, when the EDA was established, there was establishing resolution. I just want that included in our packet, along with the amendment that I think was in twenty, might be twenty sixteen.
We do have those available, we can include that.
Sure. Believe it might have been twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, there was an amendment to it too.
I think it's twenty.
I have my EDA packet, so.
Yep.
That information is also, I would assume, available.
It is.
Correct, thank you.
So Mayor, can I just inquire, what is the, is this an agenda item for the EDA meeting, or what is the purpose of having these items in the packet?
That would be true for Ryan.
Well, I don't know what's gonna be on the agenda, but I imagine. If I'm reading the tea leaves correctly, we're probably gonna, uh. Be considering an EDA lease revenue bond. And in order to better understand that authority, having the establishing resolution will be helpful to refer back to.
But would there be a resolution if? We were to move ahead with that this year?
I don't understand your question.
I, I guess I'm not understanding your line of questions then.
So the resolution that was passed in nineteen ninety-two establishing EDA is what grants us the authority. I anticipate that there will be some discussion around. The boundaries of that authority. And so I think it would be helpful if we all were referring to the same document when that discussion occurs.
Yeah, I, if there's a question about whether the EDA has authority to issue EDA lease debt. I think there should be, you know, you should consult with bond counsel on that, about the, how much, what the authority is and if there's any limits. I just want council to be prepared for whatever discussion happens at that meeting.
I'm anticipating they won't be there, but I don't know.
I, I don't know, but.
The bond counsel will be present, right, Jessica will be.
Jessica is up there.
Well, so. Jessica is, Jessica is not our.
No, I, I was, I answered, she will be directing us on the sale of what we can do, but she is not our.
I mean, this is all kind of.
Mayor, we can have her prepared with information from bond counsel of that request.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be my suggestion or my recommendation, if there's gonna be a discussion about whether the EDA has authority to do this, I think. Either the council or the EDA should consult with bond counsel so that you're not, you have some answers on that at the meeting.
Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate then maybe, uh, maybe the question is to Dave too, just for Ryan to maybe email staff? With his questions and then we can have that convert, like you just said, have that conversation. At the meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what the question is, but.
Sure.
I'm just, yeah, if there is a question that's gonna come up, it would be good to be prepared for it and have an opinion or memo in advance, so.
Sure.
Well, and, and to Brittany's point, how, yes, if there are certain questions, Ryan, that you want answered, then those could go to Jessica. Jessica could have those, have that information readily available for when she comes. If that's, again, we don't know what those questions are, but does that help?
Well, certainly, I, I can send the questions ahead of time, the, the issue that we have and frequently have is that we get that information on a Friday afternoon. And then the meeting is gonna be at five thirty on a Monday, so I'm not sure, I mean. Looking at the two thousand and seven bond, it was an extensive document, so I'm not sure that. I'll be able to get my, all of my questions answered in that time, but I can certainly try to do my best to.
We're also not going out. To bond it at that meeting, Ryan.
But we would be considering some sort of resolution, I'm anticipating, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what's gonna be on the agenda, so.
Sure.
I'm just trying to be as prepared and help everyone else be as prepared as possible.
Then I think maybe. As the next couple of weeks go by, it would probably be helpful for, cause then. Adam, if you have certain things that are maybe going around in your head, put them on, in an email or send them to Adam, so then Adam can get them to Jessica. And then if other things come up, obviously, that's, that's an appropriate time, you know? But, I mean, call space, they do have, I mean, do you think you have certain questions that you would potentially like to ask or?
I, I mean, I've been, like I said, I went through the, the two thousand and seven bond, anticipating that would probably be very similar. To what we're about to embark on. And I think a lot of my questions would be around, you know, the purpose of the EDA as it was established in that. Nineteen ninety-two resolution, which really wasn't modified significantly in the twenty sixteen resolution, so.
That shows that it's the governing body in nineteen ninety-two, I just read the paperwork today.
Yeah, so I guess my general question is, under the section in our. Um, establishing resolution that gives us the authority, the financial authority, it lists three statutes that we can. Issue bonds or issue debt under, and my question is going to be, does that. Bond that we would be voting on, is it in one of those three statutes?
So I think this would be a good question to refer to Jessica and TAF, the city's bond legal counsel, so they can be. Prepared for them, answer some of those questions at the meeting, so you're not just, you, then you don't have to just raise the questions and wait for another meeting to have.
Right.
Your advisors answer those questions, and I'm not gonna be there, so. But I think it'd be good to consult with the city's bond counsel of TAF, to whatever extent that's necessary.
And you're the ones for spinning.
Sabrina, so you have kind of those notes and career back and to reach out to TAF for us.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, all right, anything else for city council reports and updates? A few of us attended the Albert Phil meet and greet, good weather, also saw Jeannie there, so. Glad that our neighboring city kicked off summer with a great event, it sounds like. Um, next is staff reports and updates, Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just one update, uh, city offices will be closed next Wednesday, June nineteenth and observance of Juneteenth, and that is it, thank you.
Adra.
Thank you, Mayor, have no updates?
Dates.
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, no planning commission meeting scheduled right now, we do have a number of development applications circulating. Um, we also have the need to adopt regulations regulating cannabis licensing within the city. And accordance with state statute, uh, we did notice a public hearing for the next meeting to put a moratorium in place to allow the city to do that. Before license can, licenses can be issued.
Right.
Um, Seventy-Fifth Street's been reopened, uh, it is still gravel, but you can pass and, uh. Queens Avenue, that partial closure or the single lane closure, that, that's also reopened, so both those connections for those developments have occurred.
When will they be putting that pavement down?
Um, I think they have to put the curb down, uh, along the one side that they removed, and that takes seven days to cure, so we're probably talking. I'm gonna guess about two weeks.
Okay. Perfect, any issues with getting them hooked up?
Nope, went smoothly.
Great. All right, we have a Wright County deputy here this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just filling in for the sergeant that couldn't make it tonight, he had, uh, something else to do or something more important, so.
We should laugh at a police officer.
All good. Um, so I don't have too much for you, I'll just give you kind of an update of what's been happening since, uh, the last, uh, city council meeting, I know. Which will be tomorrow, try to be, have more to say, but, uh, just kind of recent events for us. So I talked about speed enforcement, traffic enforcement for the summer, I knew that was gonna be a big deal, specifically for, uh. Faster vehicles and vehicles that kind of travel through all of our corridors here in Otsigo. Um, especially over the past week, there was two pursuits specifically that were proactively initiated by deputies trying to, you know, enforce. Looking out for speed and stuff, so, uh, we're fifty fifty, unfortunately, not one hundred percent, one of them got away without any, like, identifying, let's say, characteristics. So we, nothing to identify with, unfortunately, and the other one, we did eventually end up finding the information, so. Um, I just wanted to bring it up, cause I, I did speak about these issues and, uh, they continue kind of, so hopefully this kind of. Fizzles out and stuff, so, um, I had one more thing, I can't remember, uh. Oh, uh, noise warnings and stuff, so that's something I didn't know in the previous one, uh, that's potentially issue for the summer. People outside, parties, fireworks, July fourth and such, so, um, you know, we just received a couple, um. Just a few, so hopefully you can kind of, again, nip that in the bud, um, for the rest of the summer, for the rest of the rest of that, so. Any questions come to concerns, otherwise I'll see you tomorrow.
Anyone else have anything? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, no one has anything else, uh, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the meeting is ended, thank you all for attending this evening.